So it's, uh, go ahead and get started. It's nine o'clock. Special meeting. Ruth, if you want to do your...
Do the pledge?
Oh, yeah, we should do the pledge.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody read it? The last version? I have to. I move that we approve the RFP for the NRG RDA to advertise for help for our comp plan.
One second. Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve the RFP for qualified planning firms. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pass unanimously, please. And then the community corrections grant.
Yeah, so this is just our grant contract that awards the money for county corrections, a hundred and ten thousand five hundred dollars. It just requires approval and lots of signatures.
Okay, I move that we approve, we accept the grant from the Department of Justice for the community corrections.
A second. Okay, we have a motion, a second, to receive and accept the grant for community corrections. All those in favor?
Aye.
Fifteen times? I better make sure it's blue. No, it's not.
Yeah.
Thanks.
That's all I care about.
Okay. Ruth, there's that. Here's your pen, thank you. Okay, so that's taken care of the other two items. For this next item, we're going to move to the table to discuss the boards. Which some of them I've never heard of. Well, one of them I read over here that hasn't met in a couple of years. I don't know whether it's right or not. Dave Bonhardt died, what, six months ago?
See, and I've got a lot of updates that are hanging out there because we haven't thought enough.
Okay, let's move down to the table.
We've got some other signatures here.
Say what? I missed one?
Yeah, we have to, um, as you get to the end, the stickies.
I'm gonna borrow your pen again.
The first of last, we're gonna get the middle two.
Here's your pen back again. Hearing. Is that the only one I missed?
I believe so.
That's...
Oh, wait, there were two. There were two.
Need more here.
I don't think so, that's why.
Okay, here's your pen again.
Jenna Grayson just sent me the study NRG RDA did on Wolf Creek Park development two years ago, and I'm going to forward it as soon as it arrives in a format I can open. The format I couldn't open, it's SAS center text.
Okay, the agenda book says that we're going to be doing a discussion of decision on county boards, creation of reconfiguration of members, code requirements, associated ordinances, and support.
What I'm doing is sorting out the ones that we don't have to do anything with, like Bridge Day and Civil Service.
Civil Service we have to add to.
Should just stand, we have to add to it?
Yeah, each county has five people now, and that was a national code.
Okay, oh, that's what that email meant?
Yes.
You're starting to communicate like Tom, like talking about.
Oh.
Okay.
All right.
Like, there's something in your head that I don't know.
Thank you, Alice.
You're welcome. You're doing better.
What's that?
He knows now. I'm like, I need the first two letters of the alphabet before you start to center the alphabet and get me through it.
Men are from Mars and women are from Venus or something like that?
I read that book. I mean, it had some, it had some decent ones, but otherwise I was like, no, we're not. They haven't met me. All right, so, um, I'm like, Jupiter or something.
I do want, we're all looking for it.
Yeah, let's go through it real quick.
Which, I mean, where are we going to start? Beautification committee, or are you going to do anything with that?
Well, I think it might have a great nexus with, like, dilapidated buildings and zoning. I mean, that's...
It is the dilapidated.
Okay, so that's dilapidated buildings, but like, URA has dilapidated buildings attached to it, and their planning has a big piece of this.
Thank you. What's that, three hundred and fifty dollars an hour?
The beautification, the URA has a separate board also.
Yeah, and...
But the enforcement, enforcement of the board is just through the beautification.
The URA, it just doesn't oversee, it's supposed to do redevelopment based on slumming light. Correct. They don't have a board that regulates it. They are just supposed to do the redevelopment plan based on slumming light.
Well, but, but my objective at least in scheduling this was to look at any committees where we have overlap, because we're such a small county. And we've got the same cast of characters, and as you well know, our own staff staffing some of these boards, and I just think that's improper. I mean, we, I want to have, you know, people who don't report to us, you know. I'm sorry, I got kind of very insensitive there. But anyway, we have too many, too many boards, I think. And anything that I think has enough of a nexus to consolidate the boards, you know, even if the authority, you know, even if we have to staff it with certain people or whatever, I think we all do that. Because, you know, we can call it something else, but it can have those functions under it. Like, beautification doesn't tell me that it's, you know, even though it may, people who understand the code better, but it doesn't tell me what that board does. You know, I probably... Yes, it's not, um, well, yeah. But it's more like how enforcement, you know, enforcement function, so. And some of these emergency services ones.
Okay, scanning, scanning, the beautification, we're going to do, thinking about moving the dilapidated homes.
Wait a minute, I'm still sorting out the ones we don't need to deal with right now. So library board?
No.
I don't think so. Okay, so just trying to put some together that I think
Bridge Day.
Might be consolidated, Bridge Day, and NRG RDA isn't ours, so we just staff it.
Now, senior, it says it has to be free from Bay County.
One.
Is that right? On NRG RDA?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, we have three on there.
Who's the hair?
That's Carl, Carl Harris's wife, Jo, she used to be the resident...
But she's got longer on that?
Yeah, she did resign, and we appointed somebody else.
Yeah, some of them need to be updated. I'm still working on that. We've got the boards.
Oh, we, um, I know who it was.
Yeah.
Heather.
Heather.
Heather Johnson.
Hi, guys. Good morning. It's Jenna Grayson. I'm sorry, I thought the meeting was at 10 o'clock today. If you all have any questions, just let me know.
We will. We passed the RFP already, Jenna.
Okay, that's what, Amy emailed me. Thank you, that's wonderful. Thanks for letting me know, Amy.
Okay, so what does the park and rec advisory board do?
Park and rec is supposed to be taking care of the memorial building and the parks in the county. So that's the ballpark at Boomer and the 4-H camp, along with the memorial building.
Do they, do we need it? Is that statutory required? They just established, yes, she's got some.
It's allowed. I think it's required, but that was something that was under the previous director. I think they... Wayne and Angel are the two people that kind of lead that one.
I'm asking Wayne.
Yeah, yeah.
I feel like they have. Or do they need it?
They have come up with some decent ideas, a new decal for the entrance to the park.
Well, if they, if they meet, you know, we do have a lot of ideas for the park. It'd be nice to have Ruth advising us on it, but if they don't meet...
They had, they had been meeting. I know they've had one, at least one this year, because I got invited to it.
I think it's once every two months that they meet.
And they do travel around, like, sometimes they'll meet the memorial building, and sometimes they meet the park.
We just staff that board.
Which one is that?
I said, we just staff Region Four.
Region Four, okay.
I'm hiding the ones that aren't that popular. And the WVU, we just staff that one.
This is a Code Enforcement Agency. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I just want to question, how can the only...
Got the angels on that.
Well, I'm not on it, or Debbie was on it.
It's not a commissioner told her to do it, and I think one of the commissioners should be on it.
Because this is that whole box of stuff that might come here.
I'm missing the second.
That's not, I forgot the name of mine. That's not, that's a different commission.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, it's Mike Callahan.
Yeah, it's Mike Callahan.
I don't know why it's called Code Enforcement. It gets confused when they...
Yeah, I mean, I would agree.
Yeah, I'm not, I know about it, but I'm not on that.
And we had to call it the Code Enforcement Group.
Because of the, you couldn't do the public...
Because the paperwork that was filed.
Yeah. So it is confusing.
Okay, well, that's...
But that one, you don't want to mess with that one right now. But Ruth is right, we kind of do need a new appointee from the commission for that. I've been going, um...
I've had one reading and...
This year, yeah. But I used to go for Debbie, too, but it should be, I'll still go and listen, but we need an official appointee.
So this Code Enforcement Agency is what Mike's working on, or is...
Yeah, Mike Callahan.
So we have a whole agency dedicated to Mike's?
It's actually the, the, the new code, we came up with, the new.
Is that new since?
Yeah, the new.
That's how he's doing all this.
They're having to get bored.
Yeah, because they have to motion things and vote on the resolutions, and then send out the information demands, so.
Amy, how many of these are you currently?
Um, I'm on one that I really want to be on that never meets. The other two, I don't care.
Is that the historic one? Okay.
I, the code enforcement is interesting stuff. I've listened to a lot of it. I'm kind of Mike's contact here. I don't necessarily, I do think that the commissioner would be probably a better seat, or better person on that, just to, so you're aware of what's going on.
On code enforcement?
Yeah, because it's a lot of legal stuff.
I'll do that one. Send me the, if you all want me to. I mean...
It's lawyer and stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's lawyer and lawyer and stuff. You're a lot better off a tattooed people.
Translator. But, um, so we can, we can get that on agenda to do that. You might have to... All right, so... So in my, I need to go back and look at the backs of all these. So in my view, the WVU Extension Services looks like something we should leave. Be Region Four and NRG RDA are not ours to change. You know, the transit, probably not.
No, that and FMRPO, those two go hand in hand.
Yeah, and then, I'm on those. And then Bridge Day, should probably leave. Those are the ones that I see that we probably don't need to enact.
That's a region.
Yeah, I marked through the FRN, also enact, and the library board, yep. Those are the ones. So... So, and then, and thanks for putting a placeholder in for a cert. Okay.
There's, there was supposed to be a placeholder for, it's another one that we're going to create. Maybe that was the...
Well, the one we have, the board that we, the, um, which benefits.
Yeah, I think that might be the other one. It's, I've got a placeholder, it just came out of my sheet to you guys.
Oh, yeah. Yep, that's what I had. Okay, so... In the Civil Service Commission, we just need to add members, but we're not messing with the structure. So, um, how many members do you need to add?
Two, we have to have a total of five.
And the Public Defender Board, that's another one. No.
I have some codes changes.
Do we still have a vacancy on there? My, do you, do we have?
Um, let me research that on my computer.
Okay, if we do, Amy, just add it to, to, um, like, a July agenda.
I don't know.
I don't think they do.
Um, oh, Renee L. C. Renee's already on it.
Renee Howard Scott. I mean, if we don't, then...
And I think, I guess we only appoint one. So I might just have to get in touch with Morehead and see if they, because they may have filled the vacancy out, I wouldn't know.
Do you have his number to fax him?
Uh, I've got his work phone number, I don't know this, so.
I texted Chris to see if they could... All right, so I feel like there are a couple of areas where we can consolidate efforts. One is the emergency stuff, like response, this telephone system advisory board, the LEP, L E P C, the, um... There's another one. And we talked at the last meeting about whether we needed to do something with the ambulance stuff.
What happened county, um, public and public?
Okay, ambulance report?
No, it was about the whole emergency.
Yeah, like in the, yeah, the, um, the community emergency response team. So that would be a sub, probably a sub-team to any community. But I was thinking that, you know, if we did, like, an emergency services advisory board or something like that, because most of these are planning and advisory related, and they involve the same cast of characters.
Are you talking about putting them all in one?
Yeah.
And I agree with that.
In one, and then looking at the code to make sure it's built.
But being separately, I don't think it's as, as, uh, there's not as good as communications that they would be.
Yeah.
It might be a lot more than that, but, yeah. The county commission does appoint two members of the public defender protection board.
Okay, that would be the other one we appoint. So was, um...
And then the rest of the board is filled in through, um, other, um, government officials, one.
Which board is this?
This is for the public defender protection.
So two are from the county commission?
Two, I feel, in the single county circuits. The county commission appoints two. So what two, is it two we've already appointed on there, or just...
We'll need to... I guess, or should see if we've appointed, if that's, yeah, easy. So...
Which two were appointed by the county commission, and whether or not there's any vacancies, and... I mean, the way I would read the code is, is the only time that the commission would have to make an appointment is one of the two that the county commission appointed designed, or when it comes up, or we... Yeah, comes up with you.
On that, there, um, Ruth says all that opinion she found, which was an awesome find, Senator Michael Taylor, on our board to reduce the size of boards or to remove board members and all that stuff. Did you have a chance to look at that? So can you tell us what your view is on, because we know we have issues with the planning commission, we reduce its size, and we have at least nine participated members, and maybe more than nine, depending on the meeting. So we've got the issue of how do we fairly appoint people, or pick who stays?
Well, it's, it's interesting, you know, reading this, and it essentially made it very clear that there's a distinction between making, detritium, eliminating, dissolving, and reposing members. My thoughts on the planning commission are, you know, again, it'd be nice if the Western G code provided us with a detailed roadmap explaining how you got from point A to point B, but unfortunately, it doesn't do that. The Western G code talks about, if I remember correctly, on the planning commission, the county commission can remove members for deficiencies in their performance, but that's not what we're talking about.
Now, fees and penalties.
My thoughts on this, there's a provision of the code that talks about how, basically, if the county commission creates a planning commission under that statute, and there was already a planning commission that was in existence in that particular county, it talks about how the prior planning commissioners, prior members of planning commissions, keep their offices for their positions until, I believe it says, the personal meeting of the county commission. Subsequent to the determination of yes, we want a planning commission. So I, I think the way I would approach this is I would approach it from the perspective of, we're essentially adopting the planning commission again. We're changing the parameters, we're reducing from, if I remember correctly, from fifteen, was it fifteen?
That was seventeen.
Fourteen to seven. And I think I would take the position that we're starting over. And that that the members of the planning commission would remain on there until we come up with who the new members are. And like I said, the code doesn't, the code does not explain in any way, shape, or form, how we get from point A to point B.
Well, I, I agree with that, and I thought, I mean, I didn't know what the law was at the time, and I thought the fairest way was to revisit all the appointments and let anyone who wants to apply, within the public or from the crowd, to reapply and let us consider and have received applications.
And I'm not, I'm not getting into, I'm not getting into semantics when I say this, but technically, I don't think we're removing, I mean, it's clear in this pen, you can't, you can't just, unless the code gives you the authority, you can't just flush somebody from the committee and remove them unless the code specifically says, like, the language they cited in here was if the person serves, it will impugn the county commission, and the county commission has the ability to remove somebody at will. But in this instance, essentially, I think the way I would view it is, since we're starting over, and that we are essentially reconfiguring the planning commission, and as such, we know what we're saying. Now, another, another aspect to be considered is we decided to reduce it to fourteen to seven, what I'm hearing, at this point, we don't even have seven now.
No, the ones that were on didn't stop when one of the board members had suggested that, to look into how you got. So I don't think, none of that exists, and we're going to put in our application for that.
Okay, well, I, I, you see, the only, my only concern with how we do it, how we redo, my only concern with what we've done so far is, we voted to reduce the number of members in the planning commission to fourteen to seven. I don't think we as part of the vote, it's not clear to me that we voted how we get from point A to point B.
And...
And I'm saying to start over, what we're saying is...
And I wonder if we go to an effective...
My, my suggestion would be that we do it over again, and that we have a specific conversation about how we get to fourteen members, not to seven. My, my suggestion would be that we do it over again and that we have a specific conversation about how we get to fourteen members, now to seven. And so we have to have a reason for it. Well, I mean, to me, the reason is clear, we just, we're clarif- we, we want to clarify and set forth on, on the record, this specific process that we want to follow. I mean, I think we kind of, I remember the way the meeting went, commission voted on it and then we had this discussion after the vote about how we would plan to accomplish it. And I think that subsequent conversation should have been placed prior to the vote, it should be part of the vote. It's that, I mean, that's my way, that's my view on this.
And why would you talk about that?
My, but, but my recollection was it wasn't a specific part of the.
Well, we talked about not having a forum multiple times.
Yeah.
And that was part of the reason we wanted to reduce, that was actually compelling to reduce the size of the.
No, I'm, I'm not taking issue with reducing from fourteen to seven, I think we need to go, what, what not. What I'm, what I'm concerned about is is the method or the procedure that we follow to produce the number of members in the commission to fourteen to seven. And how we go through that process.
That's mentioned in the fine, how much we want to.
But, but, but my recollection was the commission didn't specifically vote on the process. Process, how we got fourteen to seven. Clearly, we voted to reduce it from fourteen to seven, there was clearly discussion about the commission not having the quorum and not being able to act. But my recollection was we didn't flesh out how we got from point A to point B prior to the vote, I don't think that was very well. So that, my thought process here would be, and, and like I said, you know, the, the code gives the county commission the ability to form the planning commission. The county commission has the ability to set the number of members, but where the code resides, I mean, it does not say, well, how do you? How, what's the proper procedure to follow in the event the county commission decides that we have the ability to plan? I would, I should, I should send you, come up, suggest from you, have another meeting, and this is the process that we're going to do. Yes, and, and I think where it said, like, there's, there's a provision in the, there's parts of the code. That touch on how you handle the appointment of a planning commission under the statute. If the county commission, or if that particular county already had a planning commission, um, in place prior to the adoption of the statute. So there's, it at least touches on the transition, um, prior to a latter, if you will, a planning commission, which is a little bit of guidance. But, I mean, it'd be nice if the legislature specifically said, in the event the county commission collects or refigures the planning commission, change the number of members. Here's the procedure to follow. I think, like you said, it's good that they're able to use. Well, it's, it's clear that you can modify the membership. But it is absolutely unclear how we go about doing that. As, as lawyers, we, we have the right for the legislature, black and white, explain to us exactly how. We should do this. And fortunately, it's fairly free. Members, but it's just, like you're going to give us enough guidance.
Well, I, I think you're right, I think as long as we are documenting the reason we do that.
Well, and as a, there's a, there's a, there's a practical matter, it's clear the county commission changes that. It's clear the county commission can adopt a planning commission. And if we just need to come up anyway, go consistently with what's set forth in the statute, get fourteen members to set.
So. So we just need to get back on the agenda, the problem with the procedure, I think, today, as we identified, it's a lot of boards that we ought to add. We started from Monday and we did it on the agenda to do appointments.
I agree.
You have five, but it's on its third.
Okay.
So.
On the planning commission?
Yes. Well, here they are, um, the chair, the foreman, Artie, Viv.
Yeah, he told me actually, I'm like, here, let's be able to go forward, but I can do such, which should be.
Yeah, I told him Cindy Levitt.
Who is this? Which one is that?
Gary Harb.
Um, and then.
Maybe who else is, uh?
It's, uh, and then Matty.
Uh, no, Doug Matty was replaced.
I thought he was.
By who?
James Williams, so his appointment will be up.
Yeah.
It'll be James E. Williams. I think it's the last one.
I'll look him up, and then Stevie, so we've got two.
Yes, you do.
Uh, Jess, Viv, um, he's still on it, I mean, he's not coming to meetings.
But if your appointment comes up on August third, who else?
Um, Stevie and, um, James Williams, which those are two new appointments that we're filling, and, uh, and expire terms, and they have been attended.
How many others expire? How many other terms expire on August third?
Uh, just five total.
Okay, well, that.
And if you've got one resigned already.
Actually, I see on the nine.
But that's, but certainly that, that.
This could be a stair step, just to.
Well, and there are the ones, but there's a. So, um, yeah, I say we just do it like one can start a negative. And we can, I mean, with these terms expiring, I mean, I know Stevie is still, I'm sure that one of the people is, this is, we have a decision to do this. We've got access, but, um. I say we just, uh, heard, we have, has, we just said, we might all of this. We're going, we might have to meet.
All right, yeah, we don't have anything to get. We don't have any, we don't have to get.
I'm just going to be sorry to be.
Or the dead one, though. If you have to have an application in, you. So the one way to go planning commission, the next thing we all get.
The nine people who showed up for the last committee, have they been the same?
Um, no, they switched out like last time, Stevie wasn't there, but I'm big, so I mean.
Miss Samuel wasn't here.
Miss Samuel wasn't here, she had medical things, so, um. I mean, there were, there were a decent number of them, I mean, just. Right. I only have two members, I'm glad I haven't shown up in the last.
There's that.
Um, Gary Harb and.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
He's a, Don Imhoff.
But those two members of. Kind of, I don't know where he is. And you can change. So, would it be something that shows the rest of the members? The documents you have up there.
Just planning commission?
Yeah, and it, and it has all the members of their, their terms.
I have got Angela's, actually, as well, she has.
Have any, any communication.
None of the board members, the only case they hear are various, and specialty.
But this has been single, that was inspired.
Um, different energy.
I'm, I believe they only, Anthony, while, while I'm sitting here, I'm rearranging the screen, so it's going to be different in there.
It was in my fourth block, church, solid, two, solid church. And in, in the minutes, and during the building, there was a comment that that, that probably should not be reading, should not send this. And then your board, you should be on the planning commission, that's.
That was probably the best conversation I've had on.
I can't remember.
He's the zoning officer for Anstead, and he's been a very active member, and he knows a lot of law, in his opinion, that's probably why. I would guess.
That should not be this, it should be in the planning, just like I said, somebody's not, somebody who knows a lot of what you're doing.
No, Don Hoffman is the zoning officer for Anstead.
Somebody.
He's very knowledgeable.
And why the business?
I would guess.
So does the board, is that a good deal?
Yes, maybe everyone's on it, and they're, other than, um, that ain't the whole.
Well, what I was concerned, what I was concerned about, they're still voting on it, and they're still processing it, even though somebody knew what it's supposed to be.
But they don't, I mean, I mean, that's, yeah.
And if that was a damage, that, yeah, yeah, so that was, the process, none of these processes need the planning, I'm not picking back up here. They don't, somebody who don't know the process, or they're just formed by what past zoning officer, the gentleman, something. It hasn't been done like this, I was just asking.
Yeah, no, they don't, um, only thing they would ever do is if their planning commission would make something, if I do a specialty, then the board's going to appeal, you know, the recommendations. But normally, that never happens, but normally, you're either red on or they're special.
Just like you told us, you, they, there's a number of, how the process, the board would have to, would have to lose and field after they voted.
Because, um, A T V for all of us, it lifted that view side after we. Okay, so Chris, morning I got back to Neil, he said, um. It said Howard Scott, Renee Harper, are county commissioners. Then, oh, that's, that he a chairman for local bar, we do, when the county step down, county bar, only Chris Frost.
That's who it is?
Governor appointed him as chairman, so we don't have a.
Chris Frost is chairman?
No, Chris Morehead is chairman.
Okay.
And Chris Frost replaced, um, that you.
Okay, that's every bit of information you had, I found in an email that I had too.
Frost, if anybody doesn't know, is Josh Howard. Yeah, and Howard Scott, that's a good one. And the bar appoint, appointed here. I don't know how the bar appointed anybody's. I don't remember. That's been a long time ago, it has been a long.
Yes.
I need those two, let's leave that there.
While we're looking at building stuff.
Um, okay, what is the building commission?
I have, I haven't heard of this since I've been here.
My understanding of building commission, Angela might know something about this too. The only time I ever saw them need is when we had to sign, or when they had to sign documents for the nine one one center building. Like when they first, I think they were created specifically, and there's a code, code attached to it. But they all had to do with like, like the county can't purchase, I think that's the thing, is the county itself can't purchase property.
Building, a building.
Yeah.
That's what they did.
Yeah, it has something also to do with the property, like the county itself is not allowed to do negotiations, or I, I'm not sure. Because we've never really dealt with them, obviously. I, I pulled up the state code. Well, yeah, U R A had to do something with that, that was the other thing, and I don't know why they did it.
Is that what they said?
Yeah, they, that's true.
Yeah.
David Warren Harvey passed away.
See, I mean, they haven't met what I put on there the last time they met.
Required this.
I mean, Stephanie was here the last time they met.
Major Trump. I think we could do a later discussion.
Yeah, I agree.
Didn't factor none, nobody agreed upon it.
Yeah, nobody's, I didn't think, I didn't know the last time they met.
But Stephanie was still here, so it's been a while.
Yeah, so did you hear us, Amy?
Say, Anne.
We want to put that on the agenda to eliminate that, and that could go on the A T V. The building commission.
And I'll be back to the chair. What was your angle on that?
Well, now that I look at that, there's enforcement agency, it sounds like it could totally go down with the beautification, R A, all that stuff. Like it could be a substantial, because there are a lot of the same people, that's what I'm looking at.
I'm going to have to agree with.
Most staff that use boards, the rest, I mean, the young, all these boards, that they, they could, you know, they could structure their agenda or meetings to handle these things. Just remind, have, you know, I mean, I see Gary Harlan on two, three, I see you and Jeff, you and Jeff are both on U R A. Um, you know, Jerry's on code enforcement, so, and Jerry's on their enhanced telephone and their L E P C. You know, I feel like all of the, all of this business can be taken care of.
Could all merge together and then beautification, that's. I think the emergency, the, the beautifications, they'll be the change of, we'll be the house that beautification.
With the last day.
Yeah, the last day of.
And you're, and you're a statutory instructor right now.
Yeah. That's what goes with, the other than emergency service. One more thing that we forgot on the emergency people, nine one one center, they do have a records board, a record service board that needs. And you also have a fire board that needs.
That's just too much.
And then you need, we need to get an ambulance one. Cause there, there, we don't have one, and they really. I think we just need the emergency service, there is one board.
Yeah.
That oversees all of the vendors, I think being separate like that, there's mixed communication.
No.
No, just not together, so a lot of it gets misplaced or forgotten. If they was all on the same board, even if it was fourteen members, and it was definitely, it's more than together than separate. And I may be wrong, but that's the way I would do it. But that's why I just wanted to think about there's elements of, we have.
Okay, so what, so the record servants. And what'd you say, the other one was fire?
Fire.
Are you talking about the fire association?
No, well, yeah, the fire association.
That's their own thing.
It's the, fire chiefs, we.
We have nothing to do with that.
No, but that's through, all through the nine one one center.
I don't even have a list of, that's their, because that's their levy and that's their money.
Well, they, I have to stay on that one, though, I think they do, because of the levy and, I mean, and we don't have anything to do with it anyway, but. Because of the levy and because of their mutual aid agreements, whether who's covering what area, um.
But I think one of them, one of them is.
Oh, yeah, and, and, and some of them, I think, are already. So, so we're talking about creating. So let's say the functions that they would need to cover, so. I mean, are, are they going to be advisors, we're going to, I think that we need to create a response team, that's what we, like, set them up, like this. Or there's, if there's an emergency, people who are, you know, that's a commander, who actually responds, probably your cries are the people who runs the board. You know, to be efficient, but, 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 you know, that, that's, you know, that's a different function that we're going to need to have, but it should rely on, you know, the structure. So we've, we've got the statutory requirement, which is a bad idea, say it was, you know, the comhoms for, um, our legislative, because. To have, to have each county require, they say you can do about region, but each county requires leaders, which perhaps has to be good for us. Because our state is small enough, and this could be a regional, this could be a. Cause our state is small enough, it just could be a regional, it could be a. Or has that respond? People could respond to that kind of stuff. In the plan, because our energy, I mean, this is, our state is small, it's not like it's. Like California where you would need a huge. So um.
California is going to be interesting over the next few months.
It always is interesting.
Always a political start.
Yeah. But let me just have enough. That means, but right now we have a requirement to do a society of how the mission of the things was not. It's a manual, like right now, you know, what do you need right there? I look at those people on it, including me, and you know, there's probably maybe people who don't know how to respond. Still, and we're just not, that's not what it's doing.
I wonder if Kevin has an actual response team set up. Exclusively that. While I'm like container or.
Well, I wonder who, who responded to the um train wreck and spill down and not work. And that happened. They had a team of not how.
They had, they had quite a few people do that, but.
Yeah, I mean, we have people who won't like to do it. They'll get in a car, I mean, probably the first. You know, especially the better staff ones.
And then swift water.
No, not me. Not official.
They had one created after the break. I don't know what it's called, but after the break. They got masked, they created an emergency response and had flying everything, but I don't know. They want to check Kevin's history. Um, Teresa White, she used to work at nine one one center before. She works for the state communication now. Well, I know we have people who are these skills, but I, I just don't know if they have the official, you know, responsibilities. I don't think we need to touch historic landmarks if they can.
Which one?
Historic landmarks and are we, are we having the new legislation to be?
We're really supposed to have it if, because we've got so many um historic properties, especially that the county owns. We really should be up and functioning to help with grants and that kind of stuff. A lot of times grants have to go through an H L C. Um, but it's stagnant. And some of that's COVID, some of it's just can't get informed.
Do we have to, do we have to provide a commissioner on the health department board after that legislation?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking H L C. Okay, okay.
I was wanting to tell them with them one time. That's all they asked was tell me. I was called ten minutes before the meeting started. So we need to get somebody on that.
So we need to, we need to put on the agenda to appoint somebody as commissioner to the health department.
She's been working, trying to find somebody. She cannot. Find anybody. And that's going to be a commission appointment, like specifically? We, we actually put all of them on. I do.
I think we have to be on it.
Oh, one of you guys?
Yeah, I think one of us has to be on it after the new legislation.
As a non-voting member.
Well, we still have a voting member vacancy too, and she's been trying to get um somebody to fill that in camp. So if you guys have suggestions, she'd love it.
Cause they're going to be coming to us about needle exchange. And it's one for one, and in the past they've been doing two for one. So in order to be compliant, we need to make sure they're staying one to one.
I'm just asking why.
It was passed in legislature.
Ask if you want the one.
Yeah. Was they given two needles and accepted one? Yes. Yeah, she, I think she read one. Make sure they're bringing. Yeah, they were given one for themselves and one for their buddy.
Um, you know, I'm not sure if that was a bad idea, but I can understand the other arguments too. Arguments on both sides of it.
There is regardless, it's law.
It's law and out, yeah.
I'd say they're just trying to get them to quit, keep them dumbing down, kids and dumbing down, you know, just to give them all the streets.
Right, and, and keep people from using dirty needles because of how high this is.
And by next Friday, I'll have copies of every law that was passed for this patch year. And I'll have it in a notebook and we can have it here as reference.
It would be. I would, it would be nice to have a legislative update or something like a new laws that have passed and how they affect us. Because, I mean, I've read a piece, you know, like the kind of here the ones we need, like this one's immediately relevant. Like we have to appoint somebody that word, I just have to remember it.
Which one's that?
The health department, but I know we have to appoint a commissioner to the board. So we need to get that on as an agenda item. And that's probably effective, what, one July or thirty?
July first.
Okay, so on June eighteenth, we need to appoint a commissioner to the board of health.
Um, I've got a low hanging fruit too, the Central Appalachian Empowerment Zone. They meet and they, they meet in, in Clay County. And it's to try to bring jobs to Clay County and Fayette County. But it hasn't done nothing. And I really don't see why we have to be at it, cause it was just a, is it only kind of like we have to have to be. Yeah, and Tom drives down for it and there's nothing going on. I hadn't been, I thought that.
Did I? No, I don't think so.
I don't think Taylor did it.
I think she did, but.
Maybe what else is in that?
Why are we referring to this Taylor as the person? So it's definitely not needed. We can blow that one off. Can we, can we not, okay?
Are we required by?
No.
I don't, I don't have a code attached to that one. I have a website that I can't even access through the courthouse. Because it says the word adult too many times.
That was done with um John David and Mike Lender.
Hang on a second. I, well, watch, let's see what happens. Maybe in here it works. It was still blocked yesterday. They were supposed to unblock it.
They went four houses in Mount Hope and they helped create the Mount Hope Industrial Park. That was funded.
Did John David do that?
Um, that was actually Michael Martin, who was the mayor of Mount Hope back in town. He was.
Oh, that was your hometown, yeah.
They're the ones who created the Mount Hope Industrial Park in C A U D. But they've done a lot.
And that's why Martin's on it.
That's why they're Martin's on it, yeah.
So this is what I get. If you go through their Facebook page and click on it, it tells me that it's blocked for adult content. But if I go to the website on my phone, it says like adult like twenty times because it's like services for adults. So I think that's what's grabbing it. So you can look at it from your phones. I just can't pull it up in here.
Comes up on my phone.
Yeah. It's, it's not, because I was afraid maybe somebody hacked their website or something, but. I think it's just that's where it is, yeah.
Did you see where that one company paid eleven billion dollars? They're packing, unpacking, unpacking. Billion? Billion would be, no, eleven million, but again, they pay two hundred days, some maybe dollars. Pipeline, yeah, apparently they got most of that back. They, they go with their half of the back.
I see a bunch of.
Either the wall or the.
Yeah, they, they go to far, I mean, they've done. They actually also named it. Of course they did. They're the ones who helped now have given the dollars to care.
I'm not seeing any of them here, but. It almost seems like this is something that was. It's created operation with US. USDA.
Well, there's an ambulance service component in here too. Holy cow. Holy bureaucracy. Pretty fire department funding.
Wouldn't you like to see the state hire some people just to clean up code?
Just to scrub, well, they just get a lot with the criminal, but I'm not sure about the. They scrub, but there's some issues. At to the point where all their looks are at seventy advertising, but there's seventy some updates. Probably going to go back to their lives, but yes. Steady. Get your work order.
Chill, we're probably counting this on that board.
I hope that had the best on you, Kim.
I hope that had the best on you. Uh, yeah, me too.
I don't feel comfortable being really without knowing that we have to stop it somehow. So we might want to push forward the decision, don't have to define them on free business, wanting to get them up. I feel like the topic, if it affects me, you can find out. Or is that why you're saying it's still?
Well, I mean, I thought we voted in January.
It might not, I mean, if it was on our list, then.
Probably still fucking case, C A N C.
I have it all written down, like I have it. So I'll, I'll take the, I'll call and see, I'll call this number here. See what I can find out and then. We have. Is that the number? I don't know what call this number, C A N C number two. No, I'm gonna call on the website, that's, that's, find that number on the website. The answer is the answer. It looks like you got. I got it. Well, then she ought to be able to. So we have to move this to service C C. All right, so the L E P C would make sense to put under there. Um, and we will have to figure out what the composition has to be. Um, we need to serve.
So the community emergency response team, is that the one you talked about this morning?
Yeah, Amy just put that into the line and that's.
Is that what's when they call community emergency response team?
That's what it's, yeah, that's what it's traditionally called. And first was one of the labels that is. And um. Used to stand for computer or cyber emergency response. Back in the nineties, it's changed. This enhanced emergency health assistance advisory board, that's another one that should be on there, I think. And then we talked about. Amy, I just think that should be a function, we just need to determine what we want. And we're gonna consolidate some of the boards underneath the, an overarching board. But then we need to decide what that board's function is going to be, what all of the function is. So, you know, we need to list the code, what in our creative document, we need to list the L E P C. And maybe E T O S V and um. And see if there's any that may be that will allow us to succeed. We will serve. And how we want that board to comply. So we're gonna have to look at the code to see how the other board can comply. Make sure that we ensure those functions. And we do have similar players on these boards, so I think it's going to be hard to have to do work based on other. But we needed to, to deal with ambulance services issues, we need to deal with fire. Services, police, record.
Number one.
Yeah, that's what the whole thing is. But, but yeah, if I was just on nine one one center issues. That should be part of the, correct, that should be part of the commission. And I just want to make sure that as we staff these boards, any of them in the future, that we are looking at. I mean, not just somebody who attends meetings, but they're, they're, yeah, they're qualified, yeah, they're qualified, professional qualifications to do it. Um, whether it's, you know, they're retired from doing it, or whether they do it now, or, you know, we have stakeholders and experts in those issues. With that, their roles, their role in these things are to advise us. And, you know, when we get something back to the planning, we should say, get a study, but we don't know. You know, and something as big as that, I can understand, but, but usually we should expect them to be. We should expect them to be from these boards. Or we, if we borrow something to them, or we want to be advised on, for example, salaries for dispatchers. You know, um, not that you're doing a good job of researching that, but, you know, if that's something we refer to the board and they come back to us. That's, they should be functioning as. If they're not qualified to be advisors to us, then they shouldn't be sitting on the floors, no matter how big their. But there's certainly surely other things that some of the people sitting on some boards could serve in. And advise your capacity on that.
Do you provide an all in depth at the end of your patient?
Yeah, and like this is. So we have the L E P C, the, the E E T A S B, the telephone advisory. And then we want to create a cert. Under an umbrella board that is emergency services advisory. Um, oh, we do need to help, we need help on that board. I don't think, I think the type of things that Terry's board does, it doesn't need to fall under this. Because it's very specific, just like the fire service team on there. What do you guys think about that?
Yeah, cause health is. And if she has something to belt, then we could hire her.
Well, I, she is serving, currently serving on several new boards, so I'm sure she has served on overall advisory board. I'm sure she doesn't want to be in charge of it because um she, you know, has got stuff with being in charge of the C C and it has nothing to do.
Yeah, they thought it did.
So.
One with the umbrella.
Two that exist, um, a team that would be, you know, a response team. We have a great issue that. We have a great issue that. It's sort of.
You're talking about key members.
We have to, because we're statutorily required to have them. So I just think that we need to put their functions under a number one emergency services and response, it should be response. Advisory board, and then, so we wanted to cover like ambulance issues, fire issues, police, record, number one center, and health. Health, and, and to be specific, health emergencies.
Yeah.
Unless Terry thinks that her. Her board is probably statutory, maybe a two, unless she thinks her board can, can be wrapped into that. If she does, then we can do that. If she doesn't, then. We can consult with her, even with that authority. At the meeting or we vote to. To do that, so, um. Since, since I'm assigned to these boards, I will look into, um, the code session and come up with something about what I think the function should be. And I'll send it to everybody in that meeting. So we can, and I, I'd like Amy to weigh in based on the sort of stuff, on some of this stuff Kevin and Tony. So I'll get that out and go.
So you would name this, uh, an emergency service response?
Advisory board or something like that.
And it's the main board, and then you have things under the umbrella?
Well, just, I think the board is, will be the board, but the functions of L E P C, the functions, so there need to be regular agenda items.
The functions, the decisions to make, and who needs.
Yeah.
Right, so all these functions. Ambulance, fire, police, record, number one, health, the L E P C, which is hazmat, and the tele, telecommunications, basically. All need to fall under that. The functions need to fall under that, make sure we're compliant with the two statutes that control what we have to do. As far as who's on it, composition is concerned. But then, so I'll come back with recommendations of composition and function. And it's gonna be a pretty decent sized board, but it's gonna be one board. And it's gonna cover all these things that these other boards are supposed to be doing too. You know, and, and they may just need to have an L E P C agenda item and an E E T A S B agenda item at every meeting, but they might not have anything to discuss. You know what I mean? As long as the people that are required to be there are appointed to it, then I feel like we're gonna be okay on that. So I'll come up with something. My daughter's only here, so let's do it. How's June ninth, or July ninth looking?
Uh, it's pretty empty, I believe.
Okay. My daughter, my stepdaughter. She's coming for two weeks.
I'm actually.
I'm excited, she's coming for me, I've seen her four years.
Do you realize that the county commission has to, with this new statute, has to provide a written statement?
For what?
Like it's, oh, it's got a bunch of requirements or.
So the board needs to make recommendations on that, that's an example.
Ruth, when is our training at command?
In July.
Should I win?
Uh, it's just, I know it's in July.
Is it, um, C C N W? When is, oh, auditor?
I don't know, I mean, I just remember it said required training for commissioners. You know what, put this, um, put this on for later in July, because I wanna, for the second meeting in July, because I wanna, I'm gonna see if I can call them, get the key players, because there's just a lot. I wanna get these people involved to figure out how they should look.
There's a lot of.
Yeah, and write something up and then get it to you. So what's that meet, what's the date?
Twenty third?
So I'll get it off of the twenty third and try to get the key players together.
Fill that out, fill that.
You know, well, you know what? Yeah, I was thinking of the other, it just came out of my mouth and good, I didn't think I had recommended it. All right.
No, I agree with it.
No, I do too, because then, then like if there's.
I'm just making that, bringing that statement.
You really should. All right, so.
It seems like the, the exchange is one, it's one to one, so if you haven't been in the program, were you supposed to pick?
That sounds very timed at different points.
You just gotta. It'll be a lot more effective than what we have now.
Is it?
I'm impressed with my package. And I'm like, they can make recommendations about how the. I'm getting my challenge on the board center about the issue that happens. It's important to me and get, you know, look at, so.
It's something I've been, been very beginning, not exactly the way you're doing it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's where they all come together, talk about a seven.
Allison, with your schedule. Your daughter. Is that gonna give you enough time?
I, I moved it to the twenty third. I made it on the fast forward on the twenty third.
Or, or do you want to move, how put it, that all this?
I wanted to place order on the twenty third, and if, if I'm behind, I'll probably move it for the.
I mean, you've got.
Yeah, there's a lot, but I'm gonna, like, I'm gonna send emails on this today, without letting things happen to me. So I'm gonna make some calls and send some texts and, um, try to get people together and get it going. And, um. And I'm gonna want, I'm sending somebody from the number one center. So moving on to the next big consolidation, which. These organizations like Solid Waste, the beautification, and U R A, that all have access to dilapidated housing, basically to, you know. Creating space for the new development, which zoning and planning work on, um. I think, I think we consolidate at least those three boards.
Well, I had beautification parks and rec, solid waste in the story, I had the story, it's a separate.
What about U R A?
I haven't, I mean, I don't know how that's, I'm real confused about, because it's totally different.
U R A, you don't want to count COVID? No, but we can put enforced, we can put those, we can umbrella that stuff together, I mean. Again, as long as we have the enforcement arm as a component of the board, then I think we're okay, I mean, do you? I mean, do they have that? Well, the U R A right now, I don't wanna, you know, be right at them shameless face. We don't wanna consolidate, because they're, they're currently being sued.
They've got, they've got a lot of issues.
Yeah, yeah, so, never mind, I've, I've translated that expression out.
You can see I have a corner of that.
Yeah, I know that sign and that face. When you work together a long time, so it's just like. Scratch that. Scratch that, so solid waste, beautification.
Code says with solid wastes, they ain't meet by themselves, even though they're a function of the state. But, as since we only have a solid waste authority and not a solid waste, um. Connection with other counties. They operate by themselves. So they can't actually be put with anybody.
They have to be operated by themselves?
Yeah.
Well, but they don't have to exist either. So the function that they are providing now, we could eliminate the authority and create that function under some of.
Under all of them.
Yeah, because we don't have the landfill anymore. Can you talk about, because I've asked Amy a few times about this, because I don't think we have to have an authority, it's all a waste authority. Um, we have it for what? What, what are we still using it for?
I haven't checked in the code on this, but we do still oversee the management of the landfill of the yard. We do still have to have a siding plan, uh, and permitting to oversee that. Now, we do subcontract the hauling of the beach lakes, testing the treatment of the beach lakes, the D E P, and they handle that for us. But the siding plan, the committee, is required and, uh, solid waste authority applies for that on a regular basis. I think the last time we decided plan was two thousand eighteen, it was approved in nineteen, and then the permitting happened at the same time. Tell me. Uh, I had to double check on that, but it's, it's essentially. It's a format, I'm not sure.
It's ongoing oversight of what used to be the landfill.
So I, I still, I mean, I haven't read the code, it seems like you've converted it to the same, one board, still the same functions.
They can have that function be as part of the board, like have it as a, as an agenda item, but to me, just that oversight, why do we need a whole authority to oversee that? I mean, we could, I, I feel like we could make it as a part of the board.
But because of code, make the code's written.
Well, if we, if we eliminate the authority, we're not bound by the code. Like if we, if we just make the function part of the board, since that's all we have left. Then, then we could eliminate them conceivably, eliminate the authority.
Like Tom says quite several times, I'm not a lawyer, but what I read in the code says, either you have a, a solid waste authority, or you have a solid waste, um.
Board of solid wastes.
Board of, um, multiple counties. Regional followers, regional, I think, regional solid.
Is there a regional out there?
Yeah, definitely has, I mean, Raleigh has one, because they have the, the out there. So we could probably apply it and, you know, be part of that.
That's what I was.
But however, if we do that, the work that they're doing, will Raleigh County come in and take care of it? Because we have, we're on a transition counties.
No, we're just saying.
We're not saying change what they're doing. We're not saying.
It's just to consolidate the administration of it, the oversight and. We're trying to make government smarter here, so it's more efficient.
And there's, everybody brings stuff separate that contains the same thing.
Yeah, there are too many, there's too much overlap with some of these, and that's the reason. And plus, again, you can tell, I mean, the evidence is here. We have all these vacancies, like with the beautification, we have all these vacancies, and two of the people who are filling these slots are county employees, for free. So, I mean.
It's probably, there's specific requirements.
Alan's code requires it.
Yeah, there's specific requirements in the code as to who has to be. Yeah, but the one that's vacant here is supposed to be citizens.
Well, one, the one vacancy is supposed to be a fire chief. Yeah, Tim, wasn't Tim on it? He was on it, and he turned in his reservation, right? I did reach out to the fire association, but I, you know, I didn't get any response.
Yeah, John, I don't think we're talking about doing away with picking up tires or cleaning up messes and stuff like that. Maybe is what you're talking about, if we have to have authority to do, uh, land. And if you do a region. See, initially.
I mean, I, I haven't read code, I haven't read, logically it seems.
He's looking at it right now.
Something to take into account is that solid waste authority does get tipping fees from, uh, the dump. From the, the dump, the tipping fee, the portion of that goes to Bay County Solid Waste Authority. So money from the Raleigh County Solid Waste Authority, because Bay County Solid Waste goes over there, a portion of that comes back to the county, because tipping fees come.
It's like a.
It's like a. Correct, just.
No, it's dumping, so.
But we currently use those tipping fees to pay Tommy's salary.
I don't think that would go away.
I got, I, I'm not sure it would, I'm just, if, if the consolidation of, say, Raleigh County Solid Waste Authority, Bay County Solid Waste Authority. Well, how would that work out? Potentially, yeah, do we, yeah.
Well, I think if we just have an M O U with, with authority, I mean, ask, I mean, I think we just need to get with the commissioners of Raleigh.
Well, I, I don't think it'd be a problem, because who's doing the bit left?
Raleigh County takes advantage of what Bay County complains.
Well, I was gonna mention, I think that as far as if there, there's a potential of increasing the programmatic capability of the solid waste authorities from these dilapidated buildings. Also, that may, might make sense, because technically that is a solid waste issue. We have been discussing the potential of the transfer station, because Bay County does have a good history of voluntary remediation of dilapidated buildings. Property owners taking care of it on their own, so that we don't have to do enforcement. But one of the issues that makes that more difficult is, say, someone over in Deepwater or Smithers is tearing down a dilapidated building, they have to take that material all the way over to Conom County, or all the way over to Raleigh County. We can't facilitate that, that kind of dumping. So Bay County could create a transfer station where they could bring it to, say, dumpsters that we have set up, then we could assist with dilapidated buildings in that.
Well, we're not eating the solid waste, but then we mustn't eat it.
Yeah.
It is a problem, the S W A is not just responsible, but they're essentially responsible for all solid waste.
Okay, so.
Better control, uh, the old trash hall, and give them a moment. So for the entire county, for the local scene. We're just trying to command it all, we have to command it from the solid waste.
And there's a lot of, yeah, I think.
So like Tommy is on beautification and meets the dilapidated. Okay, so we can consolidate beautification and solid waste, and if solid waste has to meet, like whoever's just on it, they can have a little executive session. You know, they can start an hour before, or whatever, or half hour before, or at the end.
Is that they do this against such a video?
I don't think we need to create such a video, I, I think they can just make it as part of the agenda that, you know, that, that group meets at the end or beginning of each meeting, for its stuff that has to do. I would say maybe that's, because that's when, you know.
So, like, they building solid waste beautification.
But I make up that letter, because they came from Meadow Bridge. You can't want a copy of that.
Is the solid waste.
If you're providing a board, because beautification, beautification committee goes on dilapidated, I think you amend the board.
Well, he's saying, are we putting it under, or are we just consolidating it, so we're not necessarily putting it.
And I don't, the thing about beautification, not the exact responsibility. And like I said, I can be invited, be a part of the civic. People that have to report.
But that's our ordinance that we can change.
Yeah, it's our ordinance that was adopted, with the departments that will address the code, the rest of the code specifies the, like, the county engineer, the rank, health officer, fire chief.
And letter of control officer.
And it's got specific people in the statute that said, the statute requires specific people. Do you do the same, the same people from your file, like in the solid place? I don't. I mean, I don't know.
Are you saying, you're saying the requirements to what the, the solid place? You change, change the composition of solid waste authority board? Yeah. I don't have an answer for that, I'm, I'm still reading.
Well, if we attach, if we create a board that references both code sessions, and we comply with the code sessions, they can be consolidated. But what is the, so solid waste enforcement code allows solid waste to do what? Like do, what is our, what is our dilapidated housing ordinance, what code is that on the seven dash? Is that beautification?
Yeah, it's, we have our own base, follow the state, but I think it's seven. Hang on. Seven dash one dash three, I thought.
Yeah, yeah, I got it right here, the code section, but, um, but it, but that's the dilapidated housing enforcement. So solid waste authority is also, or some notification or some stuff?
Tommy is the, Tommy has the ability to write tickets, um, through S W A, reinfact.
So Tommy writes tickets through S W A. So, so the enforcement code is under, is solid waste and the, what, the. Voting law, what's in the force is under beautification, I'm trying to.
Yeah, the beautification committee, what their job is, is they throw whatever houses, so basically they're the ones who vote, it's dilapidated, and then they take the recommendation, you guys have to. Or.
I think they need to consolidate.
I think they need to, and I think you can still change it, and, you know, still make, I don't know a lot.
There we go, there we go.
You said a lot.
My gosh, probably the only one who's ever come to. I'm doing the same thing.
Right, different components. Like one is the decision, and one is the enforcement.
Yeah, so you don't build a commission anymore, right?
Right, and but we, how many recommendations do we want? I mean, I, I'd like all the experts to confer and then make recommendations to us.
But then also, you have solid waste authority, authority from the state that our solid waste will not follow. Like they have the authority to go within Meadow Bridge.
Like, they have the authority to go with Meadow Bridge and write tickets because they don't have a, a police presence there. They have authority to go with the packs and write tickets, but their board is telling them, no, don't do that. Why? I'm trying to find that out. It should be minutes, should be somewhere tracking. Because Meadow Bridge sent a letter to the commission.
Asking.
But SWA stole the letter, didn't even give it to the commission. And then they wrote a response, well, I'm trying to get the response from Gabe. And then I want a copy of that letter on. I've been told. I've been told through Meadow Bridge, and I've been told through.
So then like a term.
Just man, research yourself.
Okay, well, you know, I feel like whatever they're saying, they're wrong. And so, I mean, I think that's the issue, I don't care why they're saying it or what. You know, if that's, if we are examining that in the last meeting, whether we can do that or couldn't. So I think we just need to get.
Some more research is, and we'll try to combine them.
Yeah.
I'll get a copy of the letter from Meadow Bridge.
What was the third one?
That they gave off.
I said it should worry, but I don't think you would do that.
No.
Probably sparks a next.
So as far as what we were talking about. Oh, here's the letter, it's here. Beautification and solid waste authority, and there's one more.
No, that was it, and then, and then historically, one you were thinking, but then. Amy, what are your thoughts about that?
Same.
The short building, your parks and rec, you know, the same.
No, I don't think those match at all.
You don't?
No. Uh, well, I mean, parks are just parks and activities and fees for, he's in the memorial building, and this is where landmarks commission is.
Just a copy of the letter.
For, um, taking care of grants that have to do with this whole building, it's not just, and we have one historically, those two don't overlap.
I think in the, I think in the, in an ideal world where we didn't have a URA that was going to, um, there might be an extra fair, I mean, for an economic development authority to involve the parks and recs side of things.
No, I'm not, they should, beautification, they said, no, we don't do it. Oh, where's the response to it?
Can you have somebody that's.
Gabe, you want to send it to me and I can print it down here?
I have a much larger social board package. Reason I said, story of the project is some.
No, I think.
The project handles the district.
It's just one building, yeah, those don't, I would not put those two together. Because they don't function the same way, they don't.
Well, at least the historic one's small.
Yeah.
And there's a married couple on it. So they even built out two.
And again, that was, that was a thing, I asked to be on it, I want to be on it, that's kind of my hobby thing. The other was just, there's nobody that wants to do it. Well, and that was the other reason to joke, because he's got extra grant writing background.
If I understand what, I got an answer to the SWA. You're saying you want to have one or to deal with both?
Yeah.
Okay, here's the problem.
Did you recognize that?
I'm just, it's the base clients giving, one sends it down to the other, and the other sends it up to us. It's one of the, it's the base clients giving, and I tell them what they don't want to hear. Okay, so I know the Western Virginia code with respect to beautification, you were dealing with Angela's mentioned, and I talked about, there's specific people that have to be on the board. The litter control officer, ranking health officer in the county, fire chief, a fire chief. So the members of that board come from certain positions. Now, what the code says on the SWA is, is that it, the board of directors has five people who are appointed as follows, one by the director of the division of fire protection, two by the county commission, one by the board supervisors for the soil contamination district and long-term chairman of PSC. So basically, you're going to have more members, state code requires more members to be on the board of the beautification committee than what is supposed to be in the SWA. The other issue is, it presupposes that you're going to be able to convince the DEP to, to appoint one of the members that is on the beautification committee to the SWA. The county commission has to be able to, to provide, but you're, you're going to outside agencies to appoint the three, you're going to three separate entities to appoint the other three members of the SWA. I don't know how you, I don't know how you get those two processes to.
I feel like we could shorten, like, for example, Tommy to the SWA. To put in control.
Oh, he can't be on, because he's their employee.
Yeah.
He used to be on it, he used to be the chairman, but he had resigned.
What?
You have something about that?
Where's that face again?
This is my waste container, fuck shot face. Where did all this red tape go from, all this bureaucracy? This is just so twisted.
Charles.
This is where the practical implementation of ideas is flawed. Okay, so first, here's question number two, okay? With that said, are we required to have a beautification committee per code? And are we required to have solid waste authority per code? If not, where's our work around? Because, you know, we could create something else and put the functions that we want underneath it.
Let me start with the beautification committee, do we have to have a beautification committee? Nope, should not.
You can away with the ordinance, but you can, if you can away with the ordinance that says that you can't have dilapidated houses, you gotta be aware of that.
So, but the problem that that creates is we then have no county board, we have no county mechanism by which to be able to.
What if we, we can't pass our own ordinance, because it has to be based on state code for us to pass it?
Yes, the authority to adopt the ordinance is within the Western Virginia code. Can you adopt it and make a change to it?
You know, like, if it's governed by code, why do you have to?
I think it doesn't, if you.
They adopted a municipal code and they adopted a big property registration.
Right, but, I mean, I can tell you that, I mean, when I worked for Smithers, we adopted a beautification ordinance, but I can also tell you, I got out the Western Virginia code and went through, went through the appliance. So the, the ability to, the ability for the county commission to address dilapidated buildings arises under this code provision. So you have to, you can adopt an ordinance, but you have to follow the parameters set forth within the Western Virginia code. And I believe that, and I agree with you a hundred and ten percent, but I've seen, and I've been in processes where they talk. Well, and I'm not trying to call anybody out, but I mean, I've been, I've, I've seen it. I don't doubt, I don't doubt what you're saying, Tom, but the issue that the county is going to face is, is if our ordinance doesn't comply with the Western Virginia code, can we afford to move on a dilapidated building on a particular piece of property? They can turn around and sue the county commission and say, they're, they're out of compliance with the Western Virginia code. And I agree with you.
I thought we just said that the, that the dilapidated housing ordinance and code is not an enforcement code, that it's an advisory. It's a code of advisory nature, that the enforcement comes under the solid waste.
No.
That Tommy was writing tickets under solid waste.
Not for dilapidated buildings.
If he doesn't write tickets under beautification, he writes tickets.
He's just a board member for beautification.
Well, that's what I want to know, like, whose authority is he, which, why gives him the authority to cite people for dilapidated?
He does. Code twenty-two C, oh, for dilapidated, no, he doesn't do that.
He's an open dump. And he has nothing to do with dilapidated other than being a board member.
Like, solid waste is twenty-two C and beautification is like back at seven.
Okay, so, so it's this code, the beautification, dilapidated housing code, that allows us to take any action against dilapidated houses.
Correct, consistent with an ordinance adopted consistently in the Western. But, I mean, I think part of the problem, I'm not, I'm not trying to. Now, we're all showing another, that layers are not obvious, so that I would essentially be creating.
Right.
And.
This is my ordinance.
And if you want to streamline things, I think it would at least be a step, if you're talking, you're striking the SWA on the beautification committee, it's going to have to be the rest of the charge, and you have to do some kind of combination with consolidation. I, I mean, I don't know why you couldn't list both, the SWA and beautification. One umbrella, but they would still have to exist as separate. I don't know about that, but here, here are, if I understand the accomplishment, trying to make them smaller, and to me, I thought it would have been smaller, you should change.
But also, also to get us, if you have the people, these people advising on, you know, what needs to be gone down, and these people are in charge of, you know, making sure it's going down and all that, like, solid waste doesn't look at anything dilapidated.
It's solid waste.
So once it's gone down.
Solid waste doesn't have anything?
No, they've never been, we don't, oh, we haven't, we never have, Tommy just.
You've got opposition with recitation, creating open dumps, littering, and not having trash.
Okay, so, okay. So, my question is, when we're down, when we care down a dilapidated house, how is the, how is the junk managed, how's the? In the contract, if we, if you got a board contractor, the contract that I normally give the contractor says that they have to provide receipts to prove that it went to a certified landfill, but it has nothing to do with solid waste, they don't have anything. Other than Tommy being on both boards, solid waste has nothing to do with dilapidated. So is there no nexus between the two parts? Because then operating under this section, there is.
Yeah, other than the fact that they both deal with unsightly, really solid waste, but other than that.
No, therefore, and the beautification have nothing, I mean, other than Tommy being on the board, they don't meet, they don't discuss. Don't have any, so there is no nexus, so there is no reason solid waste would need to be involved in anything to do with dilapidated housing.
No.
Really, even if we were thinking outside the box.
Outside the box, I think collaboration, there's a lot of opportunities for collaboration for statutory.
I work with Tommy a lot, because, and even the previous, because a lot of times he'll get a complaint and it's trash or it's junk vehicles and it goes to his office, so that is kind of how, but officially, there is no. But it all has to do with cleaning up the county. Yes, yes, yes. Okay, so what if we did have them, or at least create a situation, or try to get these boards where they do meet, where their meetings overlap, where they meet together, like, you know, one meets and then they meet together and then the other meets or something, where they're doing. Yeah, to, to, you know, facilitate kind of a part, because I, I would like to see recommendations come out of my plans. Like, I want to see plans to clean up the county come out, and I want those boards to facilitate, you know, come up with a plan for facilitating.
Well, speaking over the last five years doing this, the reason lies with Tommy, who's trying to get as much done as he can, he moves a little slower now, and he can't get the help to clean up the county.
And, and that's something that we have to address, I figured that's something we need to address, but I don't want us coming up with, you know, I mean, we can have ideas, but I would like to see our professional boards advise us on these things, instead of us trying to become experts. I don't like having to become an expert and all this stuff, I feel like that's the purpose of advisory boards, is to advise us, because they're comprised of experts.
That's, that's exactly right, but it doesn't happen.
Well, that's what I'm trying to create, like, you know, at least over time anyway, is we do new appointments, you know, create, make sure that we have the boards we need, and that the boards we need are not duplicating efforts of other boards, and that, and that those boards function, fully function and advise us to this commission, because, you know, we, I don't want to, I don't have the skill set to come up with a plan to deal with the dilapidated homes here, I mean, we have an ordinance, but then how are we going to start executing? I mean, Angela's come up with some great recommendations with regard to creating a land back and stuff, but I mean, I want those things drafted and presented to us. I don't want us or Anthony even having, I mean, I'd like Anthony to review them, but I don't want him having to draft them for us. I mean, you know, that's stuff that we need to get.
The only thing that ties into the SWA would be community correction board. And using the. And that's because that's where you get that from time to time.
Yeah, but that board is more about how to keep that center funded and.
That's correct. But it's also, one of the functions of the DRC board is to determine exactly what participants, what activities the participants engage.
Well, and speaking of that, then why isn't, I mean, shouldn't, wouldn't the public defender be in good for us to help with that?
Help with, well, there's a member of the, there's a place on the board of the public defenders.
But not, but by, but the public defender's office fills that place, nobody on the public defender board. I think it's Nancy's.
It's Nancy's place, but like, the last media outbreak.
They, Jerry added scotch of emails to make sure those of them knew somebody needed to be there. I mean, I think there's got to be some way, if not to consolidate these, I mean, if we put it under the same umbrella, then we can help them meet together. And that's what I want.
Well, both of them, I think, are consistent.
They are, and.
We're dealing with different forms of.
And we need to start referring things to these advisory boards, like, we have this question, once we create the emergency services one, you know, nine-one-one center concerns and SOPs and getting that stuff together. On these, what's our plan? Like, how are we going to start moving against these things? And what are the budgetary requirements? Do we need to compete, bidet for this kind of stuff? I mean, you know, where do we already have it? You know, those are the things that, you know, and then I feel like we can have these boards, you know, regularly scheduled to come in here, you know, monthly or quarterly, depending on how often they meet, and update us. Like, here are the answers, you know, here are the things that you guys are supposed to do, and here's what we're going with.
Well, I know on just about any dilapidated property we've done, the bid's been anywhere between five and eight dollars a square foot.
Oh, no, it's between five and eight thousand dollars per house.
Five, uh.
Five, five thousand to eight thousand per house, but we don't do it square foot, but.
For demo.
Yeah, I mean, but that, of course, is process, it's state code, you guys are basically a court, I mean, so. Well, and if we're getting a kickback, what is it called, tipping fee or whatever? Why aren't we requiring these contractors to, you know, dump where our tipping fees cash? The one, I mean, can we? I don't know, the one contractor owns a C and B landfill in the county, but he doesn't take this. But his did is always significantly less, you know, and as a result, he owns a C and B, it's a commercial and demolition landfill, and it'll slate dump. I mean, it's a state, the EDP permitted landfill, but he has his own landfill, he takes all demolition materials there, construction materials, so he doesn't. No, it is.
Who's the contractor?
Mark Salvage. Um, Mark Purlo? Yeah, they do a lot of, they do the asbestos testing for the county.
I was thinking, sure, if I can have something I can.
Well, Steve is, Steve is getting his, his property marked in order to dump one there too. Uh, down in the valley, Steve, uh.
Janini?
Janini, thank you.
He would have to have a donor for one.
Well, he's working, trying to get all that.
But beautification is basically come down funding.
Yeah, that is going to say the two problems that beautification has, because we don't have funding and getting that.
There's no valid item from the county commission. And if we appoint. And if we appoint, you know, we can talk to, I mean, Adam, is Karen still on it?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we could talk to them and see if they would, you know, become the vacant appointments we have here or whatever on beautification.
And besides me and Angela, the mayor is trying to get the fire chief.
I don't know that I, if I continue to handle dilapidated, I don't know that I should really be even on it.
Yeah.
Because I'm presenting the cases to the beautification to vote on.
Yeah, I don't think we should either.
I mean, if I continue to.
I don't want county employees to be board members on things that are county business. Like, you know, the historical, I don't mind historical society, but I don't feel like that's the legitimate kind of functional mindset. And it's not, you know, it's functioning in my zone. But, but stuff like this, we're making decisions about homes that are going to be torn down, stuff like that, that are, have far broader implications. I think that that's, you know, that, that, we need the objectivity, you know, your objectivity.
So if I can directly supervise her and process the letters, I shouldn't be voting them for cases of dilapidated.
No, I agree, but I do think you should tend to this.
Um, yeah, normally that previously I would attend them, but then they suddenly on the board, I don't think that's.
How often do you guys meet?
Prior to COVID, we'd probably meet monthly. Because I probably have, probably this forty to fifty complaints that I have in the office.
And you have a deck, since then?
Yes, we don't have a pool.
So basically, we need the county engineer or other technically, which is an, yeah, technically, or the county health officer that's the fire machine, or the county electric control officer, which is what's on there. And if the commission chooses to hire one, two members of large selected, so junior terms. Sheriff should serve as an ex officio member. Officer charged with personal abuse, who's basically unresponsible for it personally. So basically, uh, does the ordinance say there's two members of large?
Yes, we use the word community. That's what county will.
But we're not required to have this, right?
No, you said, we could just amend our laws.
Basically says if the county commission chooses to hire one, two members of large, by the county commission.
Well, and the thing is, like, you know, we have people, Alan's out and about, Dennis Criver out and about, um, who can tell us of homes that we might not know about or whatever too. The ordinance is based on complaints. Is it, but it has to be based on complaints.
Normally, historically it is, I mean, that's what originally in the.
There's, there's no reason, there's no reason why we can be proactive.
Right, and we have been, I mean, we've gone.
So that's another out amendment we have to add.
So you're amending to get rid of the two at large?
Well, I don't know, I'm just putting this.
We have to amend a ordinance and.
What generates? Yeah, just. What generates and we'll get some house on the list.
Essentially, what we did is, is most of the, most of the houses we got are, uh, placed on the agenda members of the board. In response to citizen complaints, I would say, we came up with a priority list of each property.
Okay, so does the sheriff have to put this for us that it's easy to enforce it?
He's an ex officio member and he's responsible for the orders of the county commission, the county commission, uh, takes action.
So if we assign control of operating.
He would be the one for service, service and process, uh, for the orders. Or imagine we have an order to get in the local circuit or coordinate the down, down the old.
So does that mean that as ex officio, would that mean that he has to attend all the meetings or just that he's kind of there once something is created?
He's never attended, he never.
I didn't expect him to be in one of them. Okay, so, so as far as voting members is concerned, you've got. I still think we need to consolidate these. I, I feel like if we do, or I mean, in the way we said, but, um, that it's going to create a situation where they're working together and communicating, having to.
I mean, that could also, we could also throw the trashy houses under the beautification.
Oh, yeah, all of that needs to be.
Because, I mean, there's some nasty ones out there.
Well, it's either they have trash or they have those that need to be torn down, but.
Same thing.
Yeah, cleaning up the county is a work of that. And our ordinance, the beautification ordinance covers a lot of stuff. I mean, it even covers high grass, but the county's never got involved in that because that's, it does, I know, but. And the ordinance does cover a lot of stuff, you know, as far as even an unsafe house, those that we gather.
I feel like as we move to that ordinance, we need to decide what in it we're going to enforce and that we're not, make sure we're not, at least not requiring ourselves to enforce.
Well, most of the municipalities have ordinance in sort of dress. Getting used to local grass and the wall, okay, well, they build those.
Yeah, but they're not enforcing it.
Others does.
They build this line, force their affair.
Well, they, they even forced it on me a couple of years ago.
Others, well, I have.
Situation.
I've got a couple of houses right in my immediate range that have not been addressed.
I think it has to be.
Probably, and all the grass is bad in a couple of them, and then one of them has so much stuff out front.
So we've gone and that's what we're trying to do, but, well, yeah, I, I still think you're going to have to have separate boards.
Well, they can, well, we can just, like, create something where they will work together and, and then.
Yes, I think that's, I think we could do that.
And then, and then maybe, you know, they have, if there's two hours worth of meetings, you know, that they're back to backs, that they can.
Yeah, just like, yeah, one, six, I'd say.
They're both separate, they meet together.
One, six, seven.
And well, we used, we would meet, we would meet from three, four, and then we'd meet from four, five.
Yeah.
We always met like that, we just haven't been.
Okay, so, so we can have them meet together and they can vote separately as well. I mean, that's.
Good board.
Yeah, but the vote, the voting is the problem, right? That's where the board comes in. But otherwise, meeting, they can meet together, discuss, and if they need to, you know, have a private discussion for a vote, then that's different. But, um, so what do we want, because it's basically clean, to clean up the county or to what? I, I think beautification is.
Well, I don't think.
You do?
But that doesn't matter to me.
I don't care what's kind of.
And the fire chief's not, the fire chief's not listed on there.
I think one of those.
Alex is not listed on there.
That's made, it, it just says citizen member, it's just a mistake, let's say.
Well, I'm just trying to think of something that didn't necessarily refer to one of them, but I mean.
Yeah, okay.
Alex is there, Angela, it's me, I'm not listed there.
I never heard of the white couple.
I used to take, well, I take minutes, the commission's always having, so if I was there, we, we did that just as a, we would get core, so I'd be there anyway.
I mean, see, that's the thing, like, O'Keele and Fayetteville called their dilapidated building permission because they're dealing with buildings.
Yeah. This, I mean, we're dealing with those houses and.
Trashy cleanup.
The county, county cleanup.
We'll, we'll come up with something.
Advisory board or something. I mean, that's really what needs to be, the advisory board. Because that's what, that's the function that I have, we is them to tell us, what's the plan, addresses.
Okay, so if we want to consolidate these and we want to figure out, cover this optional board. I, I agree with the, um, in the box one, they name their businesses, they have these long names because they want it to say exactly what it does. So like, you know, it would be Tom's Hot Dog for the People Business, something like that. So I would say county.
He has sides and desserts too, so that is another. And I hope you love our equipment.
Yes, for sure.
County SWA beautification.
How do you, is there a legal distinction that you have between a advisory board and a committee?
What?
Can the committee act on their own?
Maybe, maybe you can say, probably, we can take action, advise you.
So this could be a committee, because they do have, both of them have boards to take action.
Yes.
Oh, there's Raleigh County property safety games.
I think you can call it.
Yeah, yeah, I don't care what they call it, um, that's how the safety can call it though.
We can call it CBS, County Beautification SWA.
Call that. We kill them right now. I mean, I mean, we can call it beautification if you want, the county, the net committee, county beautification, something like that.
I know there's a lot of.
Beautification, what the ordinance, the, the code is, is code dilapidated housing. State code is dilapidated housing, our code is called beautification. Okay, so we can call it beautification and we can change the name beautification to dilapidated housing. I think that's what we need to do and to create clarification, yeah, that's what they do, call them what they do.
There is an awful lot of talk going on in the Capitol about SWA and possible changes in the state.
So I'm going to change something to mess up this plan right now.
It may.
So like a county beautification committee and then have dilapidated housing, solid waste, with their separate authorities underneath it.
Call it large.
And so the purpose of it is going to be to advise and enforce. Um, county leader and county housing board to do something with that. I'm just, tell me, I mean, do you not think we do that all day?
No, no, I, I think, I'm good with, I'm happy with.
So that was your, I'm not a lawyer butt face. So advise and enforce, advise us and then to enforce county orders and things. Okay, fine, I'll, I'll write that up and we'll get it on the next video. How did I end up with all the, um, pass that?
Well.
It was not yet.
You, as you stated earlier, Tom and I have our own particular language. No, I, I agree with, I agree with trying to get my other position just.
Yeah, it's, I mean, there are just commercial notes, too many. I mean, some of them weren't participating in this, and we know what's in the loop. That's some of them like this, like the transit and that kind of stuff and N R G R D A and reading board, but then there are others that are here to advise us, the ones that we created and came through. And so I feel like we need to make sure that that's what we're getting from them. You know, this, this advice and that they're, we appoint people who are qualified to give that advice. And I, I have not come an expert on all these things in six years. I mean, it probably took me longer than that. Even at this pace.
Oh, I think we, we, uh, went backwards on the agenda.
Oh, no.
It's worth it. It's been about eleven years, we just need a place. Forgot it was videotaped, we're not at the time, so.
Oh.
That should pick that up.
It's missing here.
Wow.
Do you have that many charges? Oh, that face. Okay, so.
Sometimes it's worth.
Face reading.
Fifty bucks a day.
Yeah, well, in that case, yes. Um, that, I think that's.
What about the one?
Yeah.
That y'all just created.
And that, oh, that is a, yeah, that is the, just the, they just, that's a temporary, that's not a board, but we did hear right, that's an agenda item.
But we already picked.
So.
We still don't know who those people are.
We, yeah, we just have to vote on them.
Yeah, you know, we, you know, we talked about, y'all.
So we, so everybody, we said, so we said, um.
Heeds.
Heeds, Patterson, um, Angela from Mount Hope.
Yes, Cavalier.
Cavalier.
So Mayor Cavalier is going to represent the valley?
Yes. Uh, we have Angela Abbey, Stephen Heeds, Ann Cavalier, Randall Patterson, and then James Tucker.
And that's, he's a member of the planning commission, he also has an annual background, he was in college, and he did say. No, but we had to go one further, we forgot. It's the advisory committee for the compliments, I ignore whoever voices about one. I know what face I'm reading from the two of you last season, but I, I would still really, 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 really like to include the voice scouts on this. All they're doing is advising N R G R D As.
What did you say, ma'am? I'm sorry.
I said, I really, 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 really would like to include the voice scouts on this group to advise the N R G R D A because I think they can bring resources to bear. And I mentioned it to Phil Garrett at Dunkin' Food, and he was open to it, and said, oh, we wanted to.
How can, how could they bring resources to bear?
Well, for example, um, they have contacts within, like, AT and T, they've got a big stating forum and put their own infrastructure stuff up there. I mean, I feel like they can use their, leverage their contacts, their more local contacts, to get more, to advise us on to maybe get some support for some of our efforts here.
I'm thinking.
I know, I know.
If, 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 N R G R D A is going to pay two million dollars for expert, that is international experts to do this. I don't think we need the scouts.
But this is on the county's, like, this is on the county's compliments and planning actually, right now, that are going through. And the scouts are part of our economy.
Jenna had mentioned when I talked for last week, she thought maybe region three, someone from three.
I'm region three.
I agree.
I would rather have region four on there, I would rather have region four.
That was from Jenna, she can.
No, I agree with that.
I would rather have region four.
I'm glad you brought that up.
I was going to. It's, to me, and I'm not dissing scouts, but they're a bit hard on yourself and they are being tired of it.
That's part of my, my motivation, though, is to get them more.
I guess I still got a bad taste in my mouth from a year ago when you gave one up there and shoved it aside.
Well, we're not asking them, I mean, all we're doing for this is to put a group of people together to work on this project. And the scouts are doing economic development stuff up there, and we're trying to draw them off the hill. We're going to draw them off the hill, this is a legal project, you didn't involve them.
I don't think they're going to want to draw them, just to be straightforward, I have a problem with that. I don't think they're going to draw the handstand, they want to draw the Smith, and, and at least have a, not, not a bridge. I think they're going to draw it themselves.
Well, and that could be true, but if we have them participate in this again, but we might be able to come up with ways for them to help support these meetings. I'm saying can't hurt my health, is my argument on this.
I can't wait to see what one of them's.
I don't think they can hurt anything, and I think they might be able to help, and I think it would give them buy-in for the community's strategic plan. for the community's strategic plans, especially what, last 20 years?
10.
10 years? So that's a long term, that's a long-term plan.
They are like.
Well, that's what I was thinking, I don't know their backgrounds and everybody else. But you are a big board, but they, we'd be the only ones that represent a private entity. Is that anything that we want to worry about? I mean, Mayor Cavalier's a municipality and. But I don't think she's serving, I think she's just serving, not a mayor. But it's still, but she's representing more. Right, I'm being a spouse. Yeah, but I just, I feel like if, if we engage the voice scouts on something as big as this and they have buy-in, then it's possible we'll get, it's possible we'll get more, well, the last one, they didn't exist, did they? They didn't agree.
Yeah, it was just starting.
It was a main component, oh, it's a 2017 comprehensive, it's a major component.
Can I, can I say also, um, I, I don't have a feeling either way, but I do want to say that I know that there is some shakeup happening at the summit right now with, um, some of their management. I know that there are people moving in and out of positions and so my only suggestion would be to, to put, like, boy scouts in general instead of a specific person because I do know that there have been some people that have been moved in and out of positions even within the last few weeks. So that's my only input on that.
So in other words, you're saying not one specific person from there, but the boy scout represented from.
If you, if you choose to include the boy scouts, I would say the boy scouts as an organization instead of a specific individual.
And the specific individual I had in mind was the same one we talked about, Bill Garrett and the one we've gotten our NRG RDA money and raised the second most, largest amount of money that these people came down. Yeah, well, yeah, his employees, he's like, I have a feeling all five employees will be there and they work and they spend a lot of money and I feel like he's trying to make an effort and I feel like he will make an effort because he's, he wants to put his money where his mouth is. He said some things and I'd like to give him the opportunity to do that on behalf of the voice scouts. He's the business development guy up there, so as he's creating opportunities for the, for the, um, summit, I'd like to see him incorporate into part of that plan how he's going to wrap in our entire county, you know.
Okay, so if, if, if I can agree with.
Like, what could he do for nine counties, you know, there are all kinds of things.
We're going to put region four.
Yeah, yeah, just Jennifer.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
And then Jenna and who?
And then again, this isn't a board or something where they're voting or anything, this is just where they're coming at, they're helping inform, they're having meetings to inform the contractors, NRG RDA hires to make recommendations. It's not where they're going to say, you know, where they get to vote and create a queue and the boy scouts give them more tax money or whatever. You know, I guess, I would just like to give them the chance under this new regime to step up and if they don't, then we'll know, you know, but he sounded open, he came last minute to the Dunkin' Booth when I asked him to, because I thought, I think we're going to dunk some voice scout. So I would like them to be able to participate as they will.
Okay, well, how's, how's the board going to function again?
It's not, well, it's not a board.
It's a temporary.
Yeah, it's a, it's just, what did you guys call it?
Advisory.
Project team?
Project team.
Now, are they advising NRG RDA or are they advising the?
They're advising the.
This is.
And then our G RDA.
It's basically the people that are filling out the score sheets, um, based on the, um, information we get from the firm. So they'll be helping decide based on the score sheets that we, we all lay out, who, um, is chosen as the firm that we use.
So, okay, so well, if that's it, so you guys don't need these folks to help them, because I, the way I see it, Jenna, is, is I mean, I understand you guys need that, but once you choose this firm, we need people from, this is the reason we were thinking and came up with such a broad group, is these people to work with your contractor to be plugged into these communities to help inform the process too.
Sure, um. Yeah, I think, I think that's a, I think that's a valid point. Um, I, so far Jenna and I discussed using them as simply a means to choose and to lay out the, um, criteria for how we select the firm. Um, I haven't had a chance to discuss with her, like, how this team would function after that if they did, and so, um, that is, that is probably, that's a, that's a good idea. But I don't know exactly how that works. I think generally with a larger national firm like this, my understanding is that um, they kind of take the lead, but I do think it would be a good idea to have representatives from the community. Let me, let me call her really quick and get back to you guys. If you want to continue discussing, I'll get back to you in just a minute.
No, I, I, I think this was going to happen, these people, the national, they will have that. They will tell us what they.
I would like if we put this team together, which I could give a good team, like, not only just to pick this firm, but, uh, but to inform, you know.
How they will inform somebody that, that their job is to inform us.
Well, no, they gather data from us and then they put it all together, like, we.
They're going to, they're going to grab the data. In my opinion, that national firm is going to gather the data, the readings and the, I don't know, get information from those guys.
I feel like if part of our strategic plan is to get, find a way to bring people off of that mountain and into the county to spend money, that that should be.
I don't think that if this were, I don't think that's what it's about.
Okay, I just talked to Jenna, I just wanted to clarify before I say anything for sure, but, um, yes, she said that they will act as the guiding body for the process. So through the entire process, and so, yes, they will be involved through the entire comprehensive plan.
So I'm actually pretty pleased.
I feel better about that part.
Well, I do too. I, I mean, I didn't see a point of having, you know, the contractor. In fact, some of what we did, you know, getting a broad representation of people wasn't necessary.
Let me ask you a question. Are, are these people going to meet every month? How, how do they want to meet? I don't have time to meet every month. How, how do they want to meet to, to, to give a, give their input to the national firm?
Yeah, I think that, um, again, that's probably something that will be laid out by the, the firm, but I think every month because of the short time span that we have, I think that's a great idea. Um, if that's something that you guys would like, I think that we can definitely advise them in that direction and say that that's something we'd prefer. Um, but I think because of the short amount of time that we have, I think just Zoom meetings would be great.
Well, I'd just like, uh, I'd like to see what input every one of these individuals put in on the comprehensive plan.
You'd like to, I'm sorry, I didn't miss that.
In other words, I'd like to know what information they're putting in, uh, to the comprehensive plan. If it's, if it's going to be that much of an impact, a national firm, I would like to know what input these people are putting in.
Which, which people?
Whoever's seven or eight or fifty, you just said the people on this, this board or this, whatever it's called, is doing.
Project team.
A national firm on some things that they want. Is that, is that, maybe I took it the wrong way.
No, you took, I think you're right about what it's supposed to do. On the scoring, though, I would have thought that we would have been, the commission would be good people to help score this.
Yeah, I thought that also.
Yes.
So you're welcome to put a commissioner on the project team, um, if that's the direction that you want to move in. But the idea was that the project team creates the score, the scoring, um, components for the, how we, how we decide on the firm.
On, the team creates the criteria or the team does the actual scoring?
Both. So the idea is that Jenna wants to have a meeting of this project team before the RFQ is over and comes back, so, um, I think it's July 5th, everything has to be in, and so the idea is that we would have one meeting before then and be able to kind of compile a list of what's important and what, how we're going to score them. Um, Jenna also has a list of, you know, uh, scorecards that she's used in the past for other things and like, kind of the idea would be to get together beforehand and set out some of those criteria and then go from there and be able to score these, um, firms that come back to us based on what the team laid out in that initial meeting.
How does the scoring process work? Is it, I know when I did it for the feds, that each individual person on the team would score each contract and then somebody would get them all together and look at who, you know, who prevailed.
Yeah, it's basically the most qualified, and so instead of based on pricing, it's whoever has, whoever is most qualified based on the, um, scoring laid out. And from there, um, NRG RDA would enter into, um, a conversation about pricing with that firm. If that firm is beyond what their budget, what the budget is, then it would go down to the next most qualified.
Okay, but my, my question is, the, the project team does not have to come to a consensus in, together about that they would score individually?
Yes.
Look at that, so each person is acting independently and they're not having to act as a board?
No, it is, no, it is, it is based on each individual's and then compiled to be what firm is most qualified.
Well, so how many are on there now? Before the voice scouts?
And would NRG RDA have a input besides the board? They're going to have their own scorecard, correct?
If that's what, if that's some, if you, if, if that's what you want, yes, um, I can't, I didn't, I didn't assume that that would be so, but, um, if that's something that the commission wants, that's absolutely something.
They should be the ones to oversee it, maybe talk everybody before they score and explain stuff, but if they vote and they're the ones who are negotiating prices and stuff, there's an activity issue.
Yeah, I just asked.
Yeah, that's a, I mean, that's a good question, because I didn't know that either. So, see, I would like the voice scouts to be involved in advising, but I don't think the voice scouts need to be involved in, um, so, I'll, let's just say this, like, the, Bill Garrett at the Boy Scouts has, we can give him his name and contact information to the firm if they wanted, somebody they could consult with about voice scout related stuff, but we can appoint people. I do think we need to add a commissioner to this, so. Well, I think you should do it.
And again, you're welcome to do just like the county commission and, um, have just an advisor at each meeting from the county commission.
I think, I think we, we just, I mean, we can all be in the loop on it, but when it comes to the scoring, we're not all three going to score unless we are.
I don't think that we can all three be together at that.
No, I'd rather, I'll do, I mean.
Tom, yeah, that's cool. The register's on you.
Okay, so no voice scouts, but add, um, and Jenna, I'll make sure you have, if I haven't already, Bill Garrett's contact information. Once we have it firm and then if they want to consult with the voice scouts, they have to go in contact. And last year, they actually, we got to read a public meeting for game presentation, what they did. Well, and we might still want to do that, I mean, and we can talk to Hannah and see if there's something that they still want to do. I do think there's a new mindset or at least a, with the change of the guard up there that, you know, there's a lot more desire to engage the community. I don't know if it's because of bills from Raleigh County or what the deal is, but I, at least so far, we just set that where I'm asking. So, I mean, I'd like to, I would like to change it if, from what it used to be, if it's possible to do it now, but we have people who are new in office and think differently.
Yeah, I would, I, I'll give them a shot.
And you suspend disbelief?
Well, I was, I was, you know, me, Dave, when I.
How's her beer?
I'll try it again, I'll try it again.
So, um, all right, so.
I want to know when our first meeting will be.
So reiterate, James Tucker, um, Abbey, Ann Cavalier, Randall Patterson, Angela, Steve Heeds, Region Four, and Commissioner Luises. And that's, how many, eight? How many is that? Yeah, yeah, eight. Does that sound good to everybody? All right, I move that we, um, appoint, request that all these people, we've already requested in the firm, so that we appoint these eight individuals to the project team for the comp plan, to advise NRG RDA and its contractor. Yeah, it was, wasn't it?
No, it was on the, um.
It is part of the boards and stuff, I think we can do it. I mean, it's not even a voting, maybe.
All we had was just the RFP.
No, discussion, decision, county boards, creation of, reconfiguration, members, co-re requirements, assess the.
Even the temporary board? I think it's broad enough. Okay. I think it's broad enough.
That motion is second.
Okay, that motion, the second to have Region Four, Angela, Abbey, Steve Heeds, Ann Cavalier, Randall Patterson, James Tucker, and Tom Luises on a board. All those in favor?
Aye. And so, um, are we going to do separate appointment orders or can we just, can we authorize them to stamp it for us and we just get it done? Then these meet and vote there.
Well, the only thing I would have liked to see different was when we go into, let's say we're going to Montgomery. That's my area, I'd like to be there. When we go into Meta Bridge or Amsted, you may want to go, because that's your area.
For all public meetings, I mean, the compromise, yes, I plan to come to all the meetings.
But can we do that legally?
No, we can't.
Because we're not going to be voting on it, third would be writing.
Just like we're at the planning commission meetings, I mean, we can attend and listen and talk to people, we just.
All right, cool, but now I'll go.
Be as a body.
I'll go to them just to hear what's going on.
Yeah.
If you want to hang out, I'll make an order open.
Okay, sweet, and so we'll go ahead and sign the order today. Get it done for that. And so for future business, then I'm filling out my agenda item form. That we're going to come up with, I'll come up with language for consolidation. In fact, I would like, um, Abbey and Angela to work with me on that. The consolidation of solid waste and dilapidated housing. We'll come up with that and get that on soon. So I'd say that one could be ready by July 9th. And then on the EMS stuff, I'm going to fill out agenda items for July 3rd. And then I will make calls to find out if we need to be part of the central action. empowerment, empowerment zone. And if we do, and I'm the person, I'll find out when we meet.
Well, we've already determined that there is just some extra sheets. You'll have to fill all those out for July 23rd. And Tom and I will have nothing on that.
No, I just have two, and I'm, I feel like the solid waste and dilapidated housing we can get done and all the planning with the planning commission line, or we report to board and all that stuff.
Yeah, we can help with that process.
You had mentioned earlier that that would be on the.
Process and appointment, you can, so the other board appointment we, who do we say we needed for the, um, civil service?
Civil service you need two enact, we need one, and it's a person representing a low-income Fayette County area.
That family, the, um, prevention coalition, we might really get somebody from that to to fulfill, maybe care strong for somebody, maybe do a lot of that work with low income.
URA, we're not touching, community corrections, we're not touching. Zoning appeals. Yeah, there was one other thing that I had, that I wanted to. Each municipality has their own boards for telling you what you can do, what you can't do, they call it the planning board, I don't know what O'Keeble calls it, other than no, you can't do it. So.
What do you mean?
Do we really need?
I feel like we have Anthony Michael Taylor to tell us know as often as.
Do we really need, uh, a planning?
If we have a comprehensive plan.
Yeah. I wanted to ask, well, I didn't ask about the planning commission. I asked about the special use for the.
Board is on, the planning commission is governed under the state code of any planned use, which is where you get your comprehensive plan and your compliance. So um, these, so it sounds like we need to advertise for the planning commission, the civil service and enact. Um, I feel like on the civil service board, we should either, I feel like it should have a nexus to the wage and benefits review board somehow. So I don't know if Nick Hall is on it or he can be on it as a civil service employee or it would be me or Joey, somebody who's on the wage and benefits. Because we deal with civil service stuff.
Well, I know Austin, well, what it's, what it's for is civil services, making sure that uh, people are signing up correctly for the uh, going to war. And with all this stuff going on in China, it makes you do some thinking.
But we are signed up women now, aren't we?
But Austin said he would like to serve on that and he checked and he could do it through the uh, ethics board.
So the civil service commission is not, does not deal with the civil service stuff? I thought it did.
It deals with the police. It deals with the police and on the email that I sent back um, two or three months ago, it talks about the people signing up for the civils for uh, select service. And the um, the board goes through and starts selecting those. It was one that we got from the state and then I forwarded out of there. Because a lot of us just look at this one from the state and just. I knew I do one, some of them. Specialist, I don't know the whole thing. But I'll have that, that new updated. I'll try to pull that up national page.
I have on this 11th day of June, 2021, appearing to the commission that a need exists for a comprehensive plan project team to advise the selection of the comprehensive plan renewal firm. The Bay County Commission unanimously voted to create the comprehensive plan project team and hereby appointed the following individuals to serve and then listed them. You think it needs to say anything else? Okay, let me get it.
Oh, well, the term, yeah, just the term effective today until um, what year is it? That's when the, has to, has to be this year.
December 31st.
December 31st has to be.
Okay.
I agree with you.
And this team will dissolve, the team will dissolve on December 31st. We don't have to separately vote to dissolve it. I feel like we need them to require something else and then we can do that. And I feel like at some point we're going to. So I would like to look more into what the civil service board requires um, before we, you know, but, but we just need to advertise. Where do you want to advertise? Um, on our website and on our Facebook page and um, maybe even, I mean, I'm just supposed to cover it here this time. What do you think? Where do you want to? We have to figure out how to advertise.
Or maybe get it out to more places because it's always the same with the people.
I think we should just, the, the letter to, well, I don't know if you all meet there on the municipality, you know. They don't have town hall meetings. They don't have town hall meetings.
Can you better weigh in a little bit, Neil?
They're, can use the community connection thing on those. They have those community calendar, like the first release thing.
Yeah.
Yeah. Let's just be respectful. That we're seeking applicants for following boards and we need to help what the boards do. So that's, so we're seeking seven for the planning commission, two um, for civil service and one for enact. And then um, and, and make sure we say that, you know, existing board members will often be fired in the form of. So, you know, or at least somebody not, the board member that we're advertising is heavily involved. One other thing, so Parks and Rec, we have to forward, we just had all that.
I have your story. There's another app.
Well, I'm gonna take the word of the Dangerfield majority on that. Dangerfield ain't represented. While that majority. I just want to make sure that on this Parks and Rec board.
Amy, reprint that.
What's the matter?
I used a black pen.
Oh, that's okay.
I'm sorry.
I closed about. Can you check with Crane and Steve? They, they answered.
They said they'd meet monthly, but they don't get in June and July because.
Too busy?
Uh, it's so busy. Okay, so I feel like what we need to do is we need to decide, we need to create agenda items for these boards. Like Parks and Recs, you know, we gave that big presentation, you know. So we should have on the agenda that what we ask them to go back and do, which is kind of the pricing and products and things for those projects. Come up with recommendations to us so we can vote on them.
I think maybe for him, some of the other boards are pretty swift and they can do that if we tell them exactly what we're looking for. And he may surprise us and, and be able to do that. Tom, you've worked with him quite a bit.
I, I, he, I was impressed with his thinking and presentation. And I, I feel like if he can do it, I feel like it's a matter of, this is a D S C season. If they're not going to meet for a couple damn months, that's fine. I mean, I don't feel like we need to, we need a plan yesterday. And frankly, you know, he needs to get one put on the map. I feel like everything we do and everything we put money into has to be part of that plan. And how we prioritize it and where we get the quickest return of our investment. And I have been working under the interest assumption that this comp plan is going to, want to study our infrastructure. It's apparently according to Jenna Beltrane, who's one of our, with, in our, uh, the, with Region Four on the mapping, it's already done. And if there is not mapping done, then in our, Region Four has an engineer that can do mapping for the areas that are not yet mapped. And that is supposed to inform the firm that gets hired for the comp plan so it can help us. Because I, one of the things I made clear was like, I want to make sure we have recommendations. I don't just want a plan. I want recommendations on how to execute the plan and information on. And I wanted to distinguish what we're asking for from what we've been getting. Which is an academic idea that doesn't have executables attached to it. Because I mean, having us try to figure out, okay, how do we prioritize this? Well, we, we'll have some ideas. But I want some recommendations from experts so we, we can have something to work with and not just saying, okay, well, this looks like a good area or this looks like a good area. You know, where, where are we going to be able to, you know, get those bank for our back out? I feel like we always have that.
Well, 29% of Fayette County homes don't have water. And 65% of Fayette County homes don't have soup. And that was in a study that um.
That's just. And when we write up grants and stuff, those stats should go in. You know, they should understand like this, you know, we're not just asking for 10 people, you know, we have a huge percentage of the market and what it, the impact it would have on our. Under what today, we must, effectively, we need to.
One by.
Setting up an agenda.
Seven by one, all of you related to the site.
Yeah.
Nice to do a German. Hey, so, oh yeah, yeah, we're, we're German.